This meeting of, thank you. Call this meeting of November 30th, 2021 to order. First item on the agenda, public hearing tax classification. We have the Board of Assessors here. Come on down. Nice to see you. And I know we have Mr. Pollak is coming to us via Zoom. So I'll wait for, to bring him over. Chip, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Great. Nice to see you in person. It's been a while. Chip, before we begin, I have a certificate of appreciation for your work. I know that you are retiring, so I'm going to read it to you. Town of Needham, Massachusetts Select Board awarded to Chip Davis in recognition of 29 years of public service in the assessors department, culminating in 17 years as director. Your tireless dedication and leadership were and continue to be felt by members of the department, town, and residents. Congratulations on your retirement. And I offer that as a motion or ask if there's a motion. Is there a second? Any discussion?
Well deserved.
Thank you very much.
And it's also good of you to stay with us. Until such time, we're prepared to carry on without you. You're a big help and you've done great work for the town. Thank you.
Right, and I noticed on the agenda, I did see your name. I did feel that that's great, that he's going to be here in front of us to have this here. And it's always welcome to have you here and comforting. So thank you for all your service. Alls in favor, please say aye. Aye, that is unanimous. That is free. Thank you, thanks for all your work. So we're here tonight on the tax classification and annual item required. And we have some data in front of us, but I'm going to turn it over to you to go over the data and also a recommendation for the classification. So the floor is yours.
All right, I'll just quickly go through our 92 me assessors report. It was an interesting year to say the least. We had no idea how the pandemic was going to affect the real estate market. And in, as you can see from the early pages of the printout.
Chip, if you come, sorry, just the mic close to you. So that, thank you. Yes.
From the early pages of the printout, the information I generally pull out from Banker and Treisman, you can see that the real estate market actually went up. You know, single families and condos. So we're kind of surprised at that. As far as the commercial market, we didn't know what to expect. You know, where a lot of businesses were severely affected, you know, by the pandemic. We had to wait until the income and expense reports from the property owners came in. And they came in pretty much where the own property owners had collected all their rents. And since the commercial values are based on their income, there was not a lot of change across the board. There were, you know, individual properties that, you know, took a big hit. Like, you know, the hotel. Other properties did not submit income and expense statements, which they're required to do by law. So with those, I basically left them where they were, assuming that, you know, if there had been a negative change, they certainly would have been anxious to make sure we had that information. But we were very lucky with the fact that we had started to deal with a new vendor for measuring properties last year. Before the pandemic started, we had tried them out and it, you know, we were going to use them again. But this particular firm, it's kind of almost to me, science fiction. They measure the properties without going near them. I had met the owner of the company at a conference years ago and didn't believe that his, you know, I doubted his technology. And he said, okay, well, we'll, we're going to show you. And the first thing we did was, as a free sample, was the TripAdvisor building. And that would have taken probably two days for us to do manually. We ended up doing it in 15 minutes and came within five square feet of the architect's plans. So, you know, they developed this technology even further so they could do residential property. And it worked out well because, you know, we couldn't go knocking on doors. And with the advent of the new system for the, the building inspector holds much more information on the interiors of these properties than we used to get with the old billing permit system. So my staff could, rather than knock on the door, could actually look into the building inspector site on open.gov and get tremendous amount of information that, you know, normally would have taken a walk through the house. So it, you know, those are just some of the, one of the interesting things with the pandemic. It came at the right time. I can't say that it was my idea to do it, knowing something was coming. But it just, it was very serendipitous that it worked out very, very well. But that kind of sums up what, you know, what went on in office this year. And as far as the information that you need to be concerned with, it's basically on page 11. And we do the calculation at the 175% split between residential and commercial, where we have been for, you know, a number of years. And you can see that it produces a single tax rate of 1510. And with the shift, you've got a commercial industrial rate of 2642 and a residential rate of 1337, which gives you the estimated residential factor, which is what you need to vote on, of .8852952. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. And just for those at home, what we're looking at, the average valuation in Needham now is $1,016,185, which interesting to see the growth of that valuation over time. And I don't think there is a down year in this great town. So that's interesting. So yearly, we get together to set this rate. It's a sliding scale, so to speak, where we can appropriate a certain amount to the commercial or the residential, but we're maxed at this 1.75 shift. So it's important to note that the commercial properties pay, as you said, or is proposed $26.42 per thousand, while the residents pay $13.37 per thousand. And that's different than some other communities where it's a flat rate across the board.
Correct.
So the commercial subsidizes the residential and it's up to this board to determine the amount of that subsidy, which it's been maxed at 175 from the past, if we look at the scale for quite a while. So that's our decision tonight. And we have the recommendation from your board, questions from this board or discussion. Yes.
Appreciate you coming in and the presentation and, and kind of the broad data that you give us as well as the numbers just needed for this decision. As members know, the, the, the formal issue in front of us is to what extent the town should take advantage of the ability that we, that we have to set a tax rate that by increasing the, the rate on business sector provides a limited amount of, of relief to the residential sector. And we've been at the 775% level for business for, for a number of years. It seems to have worked out well. That is the legal maximum. So the only question would be whether or not to cut it, which I see no reason to do that. On my experience is we would not have, it's not been a burden for the business community. It has been helpful in, to the extent, in, in the way that the program works for the residents. And we are fortunate to have a strong business sector. We have other issues that we need, that we work on. But, but this one seems to be relatively straightforward as, as presented. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. It's also important to note that the increase over percentage wise from FY '21 to '22 is 2.64%. And then on the residential side, 4.60% increase. Marian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to note that those rates of increase are more moderate than they've been in past years, which I don't think is really surprising to anybody. And, and I also noted, as Mr. Matthews said, that the, the burden for the businesses is not significant. I, I don't know that I would phrase it that way. I think there are businesses in town for whom it is significant, but, but it has been bearable, I think, in that sense. And so for that reason, I do think that the 1.75 split continues to make sense for this town. I would see no reason to revisit that policy.
Thank you.
If I said, if I said it wasn't significant, no, I know nobody wants to debate that.
No, they're always a burden, Mr. Matthews.
It is, it has, the program has worked out well and it's fair. That's what I'm saying.
You are correct on that. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here on Zoom? I don't see anyone here in the audience. So I do see Evy Panessa Town. Sure, okay. I know you're good with it. Anyone here on Zoom who wishes to speak? Okay, seeing and hearing none, any member of the board assessors who wishes to have any further closing comment? Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to set this residential rate for at .853?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I moved that the select board establish a residential factor of .8853 for the purposes of setting the fiscal year 2022 tax rate.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can I just ask a question? Is it significant to have the seven digit rate versus the rounded rate? Okay. Not for our purposes. I just wondered for the purpose of, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, that is unanimous. Thank you for your time and for all of your work. Nice to see you. Yes.
I would just like to note that as a result of the board's action of maintaining the same shift as prior years, the average single family home in town gets a benefit from the business community of a savings of $1,758. So their tax bill that they would have received would have been $15,345. But with the shift, it reduces the average tax bill, which is now a million dollar house, is $13,587 or it's an 11.5% decrease.
Over flat.
13,000?
13,500.
Thank you for that information, because people do ask if we had a flat rate, what that would do. And thanks again for the businesses.
Thanks.
For that section, thank you.
And Chip, if you have any ideas about how we can grow a new generation of assessors, we're all ears. So. Yeah.
Thank you again. Take care. Before we get to the town manager, we have a consent agenda that I would like a motion on. But before I do, I would ask the November 9th, 2021 minutes had a couple errors in them. So I'd be looking for a motion on the consent, but removing the approval of the minutes for the November 9th, 2021 meeting. Is there such a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? None, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, that is unanimous. Thank you.
So I'll take it off if that's okay.
Perfect.
Difficult, complicated questions today. So this is our first of three times that we come visit the board about the capital improvement plan for fiscal years 23 through 27. And we'll be talking to you about our, the preliminary recommendations for the initial year. You have all of the submissions in your book or online. You have everything that's been submitted by the departments. And what I thought I would do is just really focus on things that are a little bit different than they were in the last plan. Because as you know, and we have stressed many times, we have a five-year plan. And so there is already a plan for FY '23. But as every year, this is a flexible document and things do change. So that there's been some things that have changed. So if we're looking at the document that Dave has prepared, preliminary page one, just a couple of items like personal protective equipment and school copiers, the amounts that have been submitted are just slightly different and we continue to recommend them. The big one on the first page is the reduction in the cost estimate for the Emory Grover building renovation, whereas last year we were holding a $25,620,000 number. Now it is requested at the 19.4 million. So that's a significant reduction from the FY '23 plan. There are a couple of items, school master plan, where we'd have further conversation about whether this is actually a capital item and whether, where that funding fits into the current discussions on school financing. On the public works facility improvements, this is something that we're very much hoping to fund through a tier two, because it wasn't, it wasn't funded previously. So we're hoping to fund that through tier two capitals. I would expect to see that in, in the final warrant that goes to town meeting. That this is a way that we could take a refresh on the feasibility for public works and maybe do projects in phases and not do the largest project on Dedham Avenue. A new item this year is rooftop unit replacement for Broad Meadow and Elliott School. This is a design, we are expecting this to be in a, in the $5 million range. The schools are unbelievably 20 years old. And in fact, they opened in, say, 22, 2002 timeframe. And by the time this gets funded and implemented, it'd be longer than the 20 years. So this is something that is a high priority of the building maintenance and school department.
Marian?
I was, I was trying to find the sheet in here, but the pointers don't connect. As we're coming up on these rooftop replacements and things like that for these buildings, is there something that we've looked at or will it be part of our climate discussion that's a transition from an energy perspective for sustainability toward net zero building environments? Do you know, or is that something that's being looked at at all now?
Yes, I know that they're, that they're absolutely looking at the more energy efficient units that are now available and different systems that are available with the sustainability in mind. And so I'm sure they will be looking at that in terms of the reduction in carbon footprint. Is that what you're talking about?
So that is what I'm getting at. I'm, I'm almost wondering if there is some transition strategy to the new heating mechanism, heating and cooling mechanism that we're going to need to be looking at for some of these buildings over the long term. So that's, it's absolutely just to more efficient.
And more conversation on that in the climate action plan committee. But absolutely, this is in all of their minds.
Okay.
Yeah, and then as far as the Emory Grover renovation, though, the, the design was taken out of that 194. That's part of the request design that was just approved that town meeting. Is that, it's part of that or was that?
This is the construction request, which we're recommending 13.4 million for final design and construction out of the debt financing and the balance out of the community preservation part. Debt financing, yeah. So this does not include the 1.4 million that has already been appropriated.
Okay, that's what I was just making sure that is already allocated for in here. And then it says that 6 billion CPA. So that's funding from the CPA that we're recommending that we, that we're asking for, or?
That's what we're including in the capital plan, because that is what the Community Preservation Committee had expressed last year, that it was interested in funding. That this all could change based on what they do.
All right, just double check.
But that was what we had been assuming in, in the financing plans that, that Dave has provided. He's been assuming a $6 million contribution.
So just correct me if I'm wrong. So the 25, 620 number was a placeholder, because that was the estimate that we thought would come forward, that we've had in prior iterations of this. Because the schools cut down the scope of that project, it's really 194, of which we're looking at debt finance to 13 million four. And as Mark's are saying, the, the six million is going to be a request to CPA, even though we made it clear at the last meeting, to maybe go up in that amount. And I heard that the CPA is maybe considering that. I'll choose my words carefully. So that's.
The only caveat to that is that the total cost would include the design funds.
Correct.
But the, the remaining costs to be appropriated.
Is the 194.
Is that fair?
Yes, just to be perfectly clear, the $19,400,000 is a comparable number to the $25,620,000. The design, which is, comes the year before, has already been funded in spite of the, the previous year. And that's the total, the cost of the design, the 1.4 and the 19.4. $19.4 million is being recommended to be 100% financed by debt, of which 13.4 is coming from the general fund within the levy limit. And 6 million is proposed to come from the CPA fund. And again, as with any CPA recommendation, that's subject to the approval and recommendation by the CPC. For the purpose of this presentation, that number is shown in the following page when we talk about the CPA area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I won't dwell on some of the items that have been pushed out a year. They've been pushed out to make the plan work of, and the, generally at the request of the submitting department, based on their workload and their priority setting. The Hillside Boiler is an interesting one. This is something that the price has gone up slightly. But we are going to be recommending that this, the boiler or, or alternative energy heat system that they're actually also exploring for Hillside be combined with the work that will be done at Hillside and overseen by the PBBC. We do continue to recommend the funding through this cash mechanism, but we would combine those together in, in a warrant to show that they're both related to work at the Hillside School. And the Pollard air conditioning upgrade was pushed out a year. The Pollard School locker room retrofit was a significant change in cost over last year's. So we are recommending it at this time. We're trying to determine what the, if there's, what the next plan for the Pollard is and then we revisit this capital item.
Marcus?
So just looking at the notes, so the, the roof replacement is now a tier one and that's substituted for this. So is that becoming the priority over the locker room retrofit?
From, from a building maintenance DPW perspective, the ability to keep the HVAC and systems at Broad Meadow and Elliott running, given the issues that we've had with air exchanges and, and the pandemic, were a higher priority than the Pollard locker room. So that's where, that, I believe, Dave, your note is showing that that's how we've financed it.
Because we're able to, the cost for the Broad Meadow and Elliott School, just the design, that was not in the plan last year. That was, in essence, a surprise to the capital plan. But it is almost dollar for dollar what the cost would have been for the Pollard air conditioning system. So by, by pushing that off for a year, so we can get better handle on, one, the cost increases associated with the Pollard School locker room. And secondly, to have a better understanding of how much of an investment should be made in the Pollard School on school committee's bowl in terms of replacement of those buildings. Both of those items weigh in that decision. But it helped me, the funding plan for FY '23 profitable to the dollars that we all were thinking last year at this time, it would be spending in FY '23. So it's swap the tier two for a tier one.
Thank you, thank you.
So the next item is the Center Street Dover Central Avenue and Bridge Replacement. And this has moved forward in our thinking because of the monitoring work that we're doing on that bridge. And it, the worry that further deterioration of the bridge might require us to post weight limits on the bridge. So we're working cooperatively with Dover on this and working for, trying to determine other funding sources. This, this document says ARPA, that's, that's my error. We're looking at infrastructure, infrastructure funding through the state accelerated bridge program or through the new federal program that's, that's been proposed. So immediately switching to a $1.6 million increase in the FY '23 plan, we are not able to recommend that, given that the bridge itself is going to cost, could cost, depending on the design, close to $11 million. So we have made this bridge, the two communities have made this bridge our highest priority. And we are working to document how we believe it meets all the criteria of the federal infrastructure program. And we'll be telling everybody of that.
Yep, Marcus?
Is this some, one of the, I know we talked about it briefly, but something we're looking to partner with to kind of help alleviate the cost with other, the other community, with Dover? This is part of something that we're trying to do.
We would be splitting the cost.
Okay, just double check. Okay, just.
Unless the Commonwealth pays for the whole thing or the federal government.
Which would be very nice.
Yeah.
Marian?
From Marcus, historically, I think my understanding is that the community split the cost of these bridges that run between two communities, but we sort of take turns with who project manages it. Is that still the case or that was, that's what I'm thinking with Newton? Or remember from the discussion with Newton?
Yeah, we did do that with Newton. With Dover, two of the bridges that have been replaced were done by the accelerated bridge program. So they were actually overseen by the state. Yeah, so we haven't, we don't really have a switch with Dover on this.
So depending on the source too, that could impact who has to program manage when that's a scarce resource right now.
And I, I think it's absolutely fair to say that the town of Needham is in a better position to oversee the engineering and design than the town of Dover, just, just from staffing perspective.
Sure.
Other items of note, we are looking to increase the, the deployment of Big Belly Trash Receptables. They have been very valuable to us. We're trying to find an alternative funding source, because in, in all of the mechanisms that we have, we'll be looking for grants and funding from the state to try to make that happen. Major items, the tennis court improvement. Dave, would you talk about how you've done the financing for this tennis court improvement? This is pushing basketball out, is that right?
Yes. Originally, the plan had requested funding and it was being recommended for the outdoor basketball courts, which is actually the item right under the high school tennis courts. And as you can see, the cost that we, was being recommended for fiscal '23 of $50,000 for the outdoor basketball courts, that's been deferred by Park and Recreation for three years. So that 50,000 that would have gone to that program is now available to fund the tennis court improvements. And because the basketball courts pushed out three years, the money that the town would have been spending in theory on the construction portion of our high school, on the basketball courts, will now be available in '24 to pay for the tennis courts, which is estimated to be $550,000 in fiscal '24.
And as far as funding CPA eligible, yes or no? And also, I'm assuming not athletic facility fund, but cash is the best recommendation for that?
Certainly for the design. And when we get into '24, we're currently still thinking cash.
Okay.
But decisions to whether to issue debt are made the year that you look at the financing plan. It's based upon the availability of cash. And these types of improvements have traditionally been supported by the general fund and not by CPA.
It might be worth looking again at that athletic facility fund, maybe broadening the scope of it as we get into some of these larger projects.
I think that fund would allow, I don't think we have the funding in it right now.
Okay, well, just to make, because I remember it was originally set up for the replacement of turf and we've broadened it, but just be curious. Okay, thank you.
I would, I would also raise a good point in our new director of public works and director of park and recreation have started initial conversations with the park and recreation commission to more formalize the development and submission of the, of the projects. Because in the past, they were sometimes submitted by park and recreation and sometimes by public works, because there is such an overlap. And so we're very much interested in having the park and recreation commission help set the priorities on the, on the areas that are in their jurisdiction. So those, those conversations have already begun for, for 2024.
Great.
There are a number of vehicles that have been reorganized because of the, the system that Dave and the team employ and that they look at every vehicle every year to see whether things need to be moved forward or moved back. And so, and it's also true that in, that this year, many of the vehicles have become significantly more expensive, given the condition, the times that we're in. So the, it, you may recall that all of the vehicles are now organized under the finance department. And so Dave convenes all the people who are submitting for vehicles and works out the recommended plan. So if you have any questions on the vehicles, Dave's here to answer them. And then I guess the, just a few others before you have any other further questions are on the CPA. Again, this is our recommendations and things that we know are being filed with the CPA. It's completely their jurisdiction. They, we are, we are on page five. We have, the commission has submitted, supported the submission of a boat launch construction on South Street. We have, the commission has submitted, supported this mission of a boat launch construction on South Street. This is something that was designed probably four or five, funds were appropriated with designs four or five years ago. And this project is making its way through the conservation commission. And we do expect to be ready to have, we do have a design and expect the final design to be ready for construction of that boat launch. With respect to the Walker Pond improvements, we expect this to be our first project to be submitted under the county ARPA funds, which would actually enable us to start the process earlier, at least get all of the procurement done earlier than it would if we had to wait until July 1st to expend the money. So we're moving ahead on that. And then I guess that the other major one is that we had, in the process of designing a lighting and field renovation at Claxton Field. And this is a project that was a lighting and small improvement. And then when it got into design, really, there were many things that were recognized as deficient at Claxton. And DPW was working with the park and recreation commission to determine what the final project should be. But you can see that it has grown significantly from last year. We do believe that it would be possible to provide tax levy funding, free cash funding for portion of it and CPA funding proportion of it if the commission and the CPA want to move forward with the larger project, which would move two of the fields and create a better location for girls' softball, for the most part.
So just a question on that as far, there was no CPA application put in for that for the December 1 deadline, right, on this yet? Or was, do you know if there was?
Yeah, the intent is to file it.
Oh, that is, that's what I want to know. So it is to file it this year, even with the overage? Okay, and still try to get it on track as we talked about for.
Yeah.
Excellent, great.
And Chair, just to be clear, it's already been presented to the CPC last year with the funding recommendation from CPC for design. And CPC is planning in the future years with base on $1,808,000. And this is why we are trying to allow CPC to continue work with the plan and hence recommending the general fund pick up the increased cost.
I understand, okay, because I know they're waiting for an estimate for this, but we're under the assumption of that number and then trying to fill it some other way. Marcus, do you have a question?
I was just wondering if, with all this being said, if they fill it in time, we're still possibly on track with spring of '23 is what it's looking like if this is to go according to plan?
They would have to be able to do the work in the fall and, you know, everything would have to be in alignment. So there's been no commitment that we can make it by the spring. It's certainly, everybody recognizes the desire to have it by the spring.
And we're talking about next fall, where work would have to be done to be ready for the following spring of '23?
Right, the fall of '23. Because this money isn't even available till July.
Got it.
But we can have Karis back to talk about that. Sure we will.
Hot topic for many people, for myself. Maryann?
Dream system improvements. Where were we talking about dream system improvements?
That is the reservoir dredging project. And so they did put it off a year for workload, but it is also one of our high priorities for the ARPA. Which, as it was originally CPA, if we can use ARPA funding for it, it just opens up the ability of the CPC to look at other projects.
So you're saying that we put this one off for workload, which I understand makes me want to ask about the energy improvements that were earlier, that were deferred for a year? Were those deferred for a year just for making the plan fit? Or were they deferred for the year also for workload?
They were not deferred by us.
No, the funding request was deferred because the appropriation we received last year, they have not been able to utilize yet, again, because of workload issues. So they'll have to have money to carry them forward to the next year.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm saying, Chair, the only, I would note on page six that there are numerous projects in the sewer area that the town could consider for ARPA funding on the balance of the budget. So the way the funding works, the money needs to be committed by the end of 2024 and spent by 2026. So there are projects in the queue that could take the balance. If it hasn't been, essentially, whatever hasn't been spent can help lower the borrowing debt limit for these items.
Great, thank you. Maryann?
One of the things that I was thinking was coming forward this year was a request from Parks and Rec to look at redoing some playgrounds. And it doesn't look like that made it in here. Are we thinking that might make it in over the signing process somewhere? Is that just not here right now?
There is a future.
The playgrounds, they expect to come back for funding requests for fiscal '24 because they're doing a complete inventory and reprioritization of where to target funds. Again, they, Park and Recreation received an appropriation for playgrounds that due to COVID-19 has not been expended yet. So they have those resources to begin the project. And the supplemental appropriation is likely in '24.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Kate, before I?
Just wanted to note that what we've presented are the 23 proposals. We'll be talking a little bit more about the full plan and the theory behind it at your next meetings. But there is a funding request in the future years for Park and Recreation to do not only playgrounds, but also some of these things like basketball courts and tennis courts that are big to the max.
And even preliminary planning for skate parks or whatever active sports.
Including pickleball.
Yeah. Yes. We did talk about that.
Thank you.
That's it? Okay. I just had a couple of questions looking through and ARPA was mentioned. And I'm just looking and I'm assuming it's not eligible, but for example, public works facility improvements, and I know that's tier two cash, but that line item and the public works infrastructure program, would any of that, if we decided to, do you know if any of that would be eligible?
Our town council has determined that road improvements are not eligible.
Okay.
So unless they're directly related to water or sewer infrastructure.
Fine. And then the Hillside School Boiler Installation, I read the description. I understand somewhat of the urgency. I know right now it's swing space or it's going to be swing space. I just would like to see if that's a must-have at this time, knowing that that, or something we could put off. And maybe if there is a request for funding for a school, if that may be put into that. I'm just, the urgency, I would just like to double check on that.
So we can certainly have somebody talk to about it. We do expect the building to be in use for the next five to 10 years for some purpose. It has, the heat has been exceptionally sporadic for the police department. And in order to ensure the building, it has to be heated. So I think this may be a grin and bear it item, but we will absolutely.
Okay, this is my concern, but I know other people look at that and they say, okay.
They're looking at alternatives to how they can provide the heat. They're already.
Okay, great.
I was just going to say, I do feel like Hank and Steve have beat a drumbeat on that boiler. And we have heard about it repeatedly from them as no matter what happens, this is going to be on their need list. So I don't feel like it was a new thing to see it here. They do keep talking about it, so.
Yep. And I understood it was a concern, I understand it's a concern, just something, you know, it's a building that won't go away. I know it's been great for us, but it's like, oh my gosh. Questions, discussion on the plan, first round? Dan?
Yeah, this, it's a good piece of work and you have to do a lot to narrow down all of the things that we're trying to do. And this is the first year of the five-year in this summary now. Now, I know that, for example, we're working on the next phase of the downtown redevelopment, including the treatment of the Great Plains train crossing. There's no funding required in year one.
That's chapter 90.
That'll be chapter 90, so outside of.
Right. We will be bringing back some alternatives for, as we've talked about, that stretch of Great Plains Avenue from Chapel Chestnut towards the post office. No final decisions have been made after all the feedback we've been trying to figure out the best way.
Good, thank you. And that could help be a step, a small step for Quiet Zone if we do it a certain way.
Yes, and there are, there is a request for Quiet Zone for the other crossings in the out years.
In the out years. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, well, this is round one of a three-round discussion. But I want to thank you for all the work and as Dan, everyone here has commented, it's a lot of work. And this is our plan moving forward. And speak now because worst thing is when we come to you and say, why can't we do this next year? It's not in the plan, right? So we're all guilty of that in one way or the other, but thank you very much for that. Next item on the agenda is executive session, exceptions three and six. And I'm looking for a motion to go into executive session under exception three, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and I do so declare. And then under exception six, to consider the purchase exchange of the lease or value of real property. The chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. I so declare that as well and not to return to open session prior to adjournment. Is there such a motion?
Show move.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Dan?
Yes.
Maryann?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yeah.
Chair votes yes. Thank you all. Good night.